The Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Amy Kelly, Board of Adjustment Report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have our Board of Adjustment Recommendation Agenda. Item one is a recommendation for approval unanimous. It's a consideration of a request for a 15-foot variance off of Magnolia Street to construct a garage on an existing slab located at 605 Alligator Drive, lots five and six, block one, Sun and Sands, unit two. Request submitted by Thomas Wigan. He's the applicant. They have an existing slab. It's closer to Magnolia Street, and they're hoping to be able to utilize the existing slab. It's in this location. But it is only 15 feet from the 10 feet off of the Magnolia Street. So they're requesting a variance for 15 feet into the property line off of Magnolia Street.
Please get a vote.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burton, second by Commissioner Jones.
Okay, item number, oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, number two, we have a recommendation for approval. It was unanimous. Consideration of a request to construct a lumber tree 20 feet into the west side property line off of South Franklin Street. Property described as 268 Highway 98, East Point, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Oliver Sphery Renovations and Construction, Inc., agent for Taylor's Building Supply.
Please get a vote.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Item number three, it was a recommendation for denial. It was unanimous. In August 2002, the Board of County Commissioners made a set of precedent that if you ask for a variance into the critical habitat, then you will be limited to a thousand-square-foot footprint for the house. This consideration of a request was for a five-foot variance into the critical habitat zone to construct a 1,343-square-foot, single-story home located at 37 Carousel Terrace, lot two, Holiday Beach, unit one. Request submitted by Wayne and Susan Johnson, applicant. The reason why we requested to deny this was because it was 343 square feet above what the county set a precedence back in 2002 with. So the applicant was aware, but he did go forward with asking for the request.
Motion to take the board adjustments recommended now.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Just a comment. I think this is an excellent example of when potential buyers are wanting to buy property in Franklin County, I really think you should take the hand of your realtor and come to our building and planning department before you make such commitments. I think we are, we're using a standard of practice here. That's why our property values remain strong, for the reason we adhere to standards of practice, and our building and planning department is that standard of practice, and I think it's important that buyers get educated before they make commitments.
Take, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, our Board of Adjustments is complete, so we'll go to our planning and zoning agenda. We have a critical shoreline application. It was recommended for approval unanimous. Consideration of a request to construct a single-family residential dock located at lot two Savannah Cove, 1269 East Gulf Beach Drive, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed access walkway for the dock will be 275 feet by four foot wide with a 12-by-20 terminal platform and two 12-by-20 boatlifts. This application has all state and federal permits. Request submitted by Dan Garlic, Garlic Environmental Agency, agent for Joseph Lawrence. The applicant has a house.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by two, Commissioner Parrish and Commissioner Mastin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Item number two, we have a final plat application. The recommendation for approval was unanimous. Consideration of a request for final plat approval of a one-unit subdivision formerly known as lots one and two Chateau Dela Grange, lying in section 22 Township Nine South, range six west, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Barbara Sanders, agent for Cory Endeavour Reynolds-Johnson, applicants.
Motion to approve the request.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mastin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, item number three is a part of our land use and rezoning applications. This recommend, this was a recommendation for approval of a public, I'm going to stutter, of a public hearing, three-to-one vote in favor. Chairman Murphy recused himself and did not vote during this request. He has a familiar relationship. Consideration of a request for a land use change of 1.04 acres from commercial recreation to commercial fishing and a rezoning. This is just a rezoning. There was a, an era in the planning and zoning agenda. From C3, commercial recreation, to C1, commercial fishing. Property lying in section six Township Seven South, range one west, 127 Harbor Circle, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Paul and Stephanie Parker.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. It's important that I recuse myself in this particular deliberation because I have a business relationship with Mr. Parker relative to sale of property, so I'll have to stand by and not vote.
Okay, you got to give it to lawyers.
I've already gotten counsel.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Commissioner Bolt has disclosed this business relationship, contractual relationship with Mr. Parker to me. I've double-checked the statute during the break, and in fact, he does have a voting conflict, and I've advised him of such, and he is now announcing publicly, as he is required to do, that he has a voting conflict, the basis for the conflict, and he will be filing the form that Mr. Morone will be filling out for him within the next 15 days and file up with the Commission on Ethics and with the clerk.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Park.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm just here to answer any questions. I can tell you what we're working on if you'd like, if you have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Just clarifying. Amy, what you're asking today is permission to take it to a public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Mastin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass the vote. With Commissioner Burke accusing himself.
Okay, item number four is a recommendation for approval of a public hearing. It was unanimous. Consideration of a request for a land use change of 7.68-acre parcel from single-family residential and single-family home industry to commercial business, and a rezoning from R1, single-family residential, and R4, single-family home industry, to C2, commercial business. Property lying in section 22 Township Eight South, range six west. Request submitted by James Ward, applicant.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Also, we have a public hearing that was scheduled for 10:30. The applicant has withdrew it, so we're not going to have the, the public hearing this morning.
Okay. That's the one we get?
That would be 10:30, sir.
Yeah, we kept it nine here so that everybody knew we were supposed to have it, right?
That's correct.
We already advertised, so I had to leave it on the agenda and let everybody be drawn by the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we also have an appointment for our Planning and Zoning Board in Mr. Noah Lockley's district. His name is Alex Skrawansky. Oh, then I will excuse myself. Thank you so much.
Okay, so item number five applies to planning and zoning. Mr. Toronto, Joey Toronto currently sits on your planning and zoning forestry seat. Mr. Toronto informed staff that due to his 2020 schedule, he will not be able to attend all of the 2020 P&amp;Z meetings. However, Mr. Toronto, being the good public citizen that he is, has found another forestry officer, Mr. Alex Skrawansky, correct? Best that I can do, that lives in Chairman Lockley's district and is willing to serve in P&amp;Z. If the Board has no objection, Mr. Skrawansky would serve as an alternate, which would allow him the opportunity to gain a better understanding of P&amp;Z until Mr. Toronto is ready to step down. Now, Mr. Toronto is willing to serve as an alternate in the future as, when his schedule allows, especially when additional members are needed to meet the core requirements. I will inform the Board when Mr. Toronto and Mr. Skrawansky are ready to switch seats. I need a motion to appoint Mr. Skrawansky to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate member.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin, second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous. Both are willing, right? I mean, y'all done talked to them and everything?
Sir.
Okay. Let me see, his name again?
Oh.
Uh-huh. Mm-hmm. Keep up the good work. Okay. Next on the agenda will be RFP, RFQ.
I don't need a small, not proposal. There's no commission, there's no money amount of these. It's going to be rated by a committee, and Attorney Schuler likes me to list the names on the committee, which will be myself, your road superintendent, Mr. Howard Neighbors, and Miss, and Lauren. Why does Lauren's name, last name escapes me?
Libera.
Libera.
Really?
I know, really, from the planning, from the finance office. That's going to be the review committee. We'll review the, the three packages and bring back a recommendation. We'll rank them and bring it back to you guys at the next meeting. Okay? And this is actually for CEI services for the sidewalk and minor drainage improvements of County Road 67, also known as Tallahassee Street, over there in Carabelle. I think it goes from, from Avenue A northward to Crooked Creek Road in Carabelle, if I read that correctly. It's, this project is federally funded with assistance from FDOT and the Federal Highway Administrative Administration. Okay, so the first group is Dewberry Engineers. They have a Port St. Joe office, and I think that's all I'm required to say at the moment. There's no pricing, no cost, no, no money amount in here. These will be reviewed for their qualifications.
Oh, okay. Michael, what does CEI stand for?
Construction Engineering Inspection, correct? I'm sure you didn't tell me that was going to be on the test. I was asking that kind of question. All right, next is DRMP, and they, they have a Tallahassee address. Remember the green circle? DRMP. And the final group is AE Engineering Incorporated. See everything else here. I got an email, a cell number, but no.
I heard a name.
Local address. I'm sure it's in here somewhere, Commissioners.
A and E.
Yeah. A and E Engineering Incorporated.
Was it on the?
Sir?
Was there a return address on that one?
C.
Mariana.
Mariana. And that's the three firms, so what I would need from the Board is a motion turning, forwarding this to the review committee for review and ranking, and we'll come back to you with a recommendation at your next meeting.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Next on the agenda will be Mr. David Walker, Wayne's CEO request. Mr. Nicole Shipp, Wayne's Plan Operator Director's report.
Good morning, good morning, Commissioners. David Walker, Wayne's interim CEO. I have two requests for you this morning. The Wayne's Hospital Board has approved the annual 2020 annual budget, and we would like for you to approve it as well. Our budget is low over $15 million. I just want to clarify for the public and the audience that no property tax or ABOLAR tax goes to the hospital operations, only the sales tax. And that sales tax provide for operations for the hospital as well as the two clinics. And then the ABOLAR property tax goes to EMS, so I just want to make that clarification.
Please get a vote on that.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Secondly, many of you know that our money market account has, was deplished, you know, a little, and so we're requesting that somehow we can, with your assistance, begin to build that back up and maybe, you know, put some funding into that account, and then if we need it at the hospital, you know, we'll go through the county coordinator and assistant county finance officer for that request. And so I'm just forecasting, you know, that, you know, maybe in the later months, we may need to pull from our savings account. But right now, it's, you know, we, we're a little short. We have $123,000 in it, but we want to make sure that we continue to build that account up.
Well, they need, we always had some in there, and I'd like to see some.
Well, our county attorney just reminded me of something. It was, how many years ago did they approve actually funding at some point that was never used? It has to be over, yeah, at least two years ago.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Go ahead.
My recollection is the Board at some point in the past, the record and the clerk will have to confirm, I mean, it has been a while back, but my understanding was that the Board had authorized up to five pay periods, I think was the, the language that the Board had authorized, now, you know, as needed without having to come back to the Board. How many of those five draws, if any, have been taken? That I don't know, so I think.
That I can ask a question. None, none of those five draws have been taken. Oh, my bad.
I have it actually right here. At an emergency meeting on December 30, 2015, the Board authorized emergency advancement of $100,000 on 12/30/15, and authorized additional payments as requested to a maximum of $180,000 times three. They transferred $100,000 on 1/25/16. They transferred $92,000 on 2/11/16. They transferred $35,000 on 2/22/16. Transferred $70,000 on 3/9/16. Transferred $90,000 on 5/18/16. Transferred $48,000 on 6/1/16. Lesser repayment of $50,000 on 6/17/16. Transferred $125,000 on 7/25/16. So that was actually about $890,000 in emergency transfers as of 9/30/16. And we received a payment of $150,000 on 4/27/17, and another $50,000 on 7/20/17. So just to kind of give you guys a history of those transfers, but that was quite a long time ago. That was.
Yeah.
But, uh, there's no more payment on that. We voted, we voted that, that all that was hospital money.
Yeah, I think she told, you're talking about something different from what the chairman's referring to.
Well, that was the amount that you all, I mean, that's the same authorization that you're talking of, I believe, isn't it, Schuler?
I just have a recollection, but there's a reason we keep public records, but I remember there was an authorization of up to like five pay periods that I would need to come back to the Board.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm hearing about this live in the meeting.
That was when Mike Cooper was here.
Exactly.
That's the same one?
That would be the same one, but that's a long time ago. I don't, I don't know that that would be like an open-ended.
I was unaware that, that even money was transferred based on that request. I know there was some big pride of that, I didn't know.
Well, it's still staying, Mr. Schuler.
Well, the Board authorized a certain number of draws. Now, how much of that, as I said, was taken out subsequent to that authorization? I don't ever, I'm not involved in those discussions. I don't know if they've used all of those pre-authorized draws or not. I mean, I'm hearing something live this morning, but, you know, perhaps the cleanest thing would be for the Board to either defer this and let us look at the record and come back with more complete information, or if there's a need to act this morning based on, I mean, do we need to?
No, we don't need to act this morning. You know, this is a forecast, maybe in November.
I would say defer it and then look at the record and report back at the next meeting.
Yeah. And the Board remembers, you know, prior CEO, that's, that's what, I guess, what got me a little upset, because I had fought to set aside $750,000 in the money market account, and this is exactly what it was for, for times like this, and it was used for other purposes unknowing to, to myself and to the Board of County Commissioners, you know. So.
But I still would like to see, if I'm have enough for extra payroll.
Just in case. Yes.
I meant to date, without coming back to the Board, we wouldn't have to have no special meeting, and we can go from there.
So moved.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burton. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous. That way, we'll check, we'll check the records and come up with a new plan or whatever we got to do, but we need them to be able to cover themselves just in case.
And his request says if needed.
Right.
Yeah, 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 it's if needed. I'm just forecasting.
We're a month away from.
Yeah, we're like two months away, then you got May 2020, you know, three payrolls or whatever. So I'm just thinking ahead, you know, we may not need it, but just in case they do, in case we do need it.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, if you do, Mr. Walker, or just, see, the other guy in trouble because they used it without, people, well, maybe I shouldn't be saying.
Keeping the board informed.
Just keep the board informed.
Yeah, and what I do, you know, before we even make the request, I notify Aaron and Michael, you know, and that way, everything is clear and clean. I just want to tell you ahead in advance, you know, we not there yet.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it is. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to compliment all of that. You see, we just now made another pivot publicly. Now we have hospital transparency, proactively, before we get into trouble. And this is, I think, a very defining moment this morning, and I appreciate you doing this.
Thank you, appreciate you. I have one other request, Nicole.
Go ahead.
Good morning, gentlemen. Nicole Cheffey.
Good morning.
We have one request for 5,500 for, regarding a masonry project in, in relation to the rebriefing. We've searched for it, and this is, we have one company that's willing to do the work.
Please get a vote.
After looking at the photos provided by Ms. Cheffey on, on some issues that we need to have some masonry work done at the hospital, so moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. At them big hoes up there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all too? Okay, keep up the good work.
Yep.
Yes, next on the agenda will be Mr. Deborah Boucher, CDVG Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr.
I have one item for you today. We talked previously about some of the people who have the donated mobile homes and wanting to get the CDVG-funded mobile homes. I have the first one proposed for you today. Annie in William Banks, 638 Ridge Road, had a mobile home donated by church, and they qualify for a CDVG mobile home. And we have someone whose home was burned, not by the East Point Fire, but by another fire, Jason Melander. And one of the issues that we had when we discussed this was if we're going to replace a donated home with a CDVG home, two issues. One is, would the existing home go to someone who needed it in a similar situation, the, either the East Point Fire or something like that? And that is the case here. And the other issue was, would the party that would receive the donated mobile home be able to immediately install it and, at their expense, on their land? And that is also the case in this situation.
Please get a vote.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher.
Thank you very much.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Thank you very much. That's it, unless you have something for me.
How you coming with that other project?
Um, I got a, one piece of the information that I needed, and I'll, I'll be following up with that.
Yeah, I'm getting calls that they said he took care, they said they took care of one of the things over in the coat house.
Yeah, I just kind of sent you the taxes.
Yeah.
So they.
I can, I can check on that.
Okay, well, get back with Michael on that, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Marcia Johnson, Clerk of the Court.
I don't have a report this morning.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda will be, sitting in for Mr. Allen.
Oh, no, no report from Allen today.
No report?
No.
Okay, Allen had no report, so next on the agenda will be Mr. Michael Morone, County Coordinator, report.
So we are, let's see here. We did one through five, so let's get to item six. At your last meeting, I informed the Board that Representative Shoaf requested a list of the most important needs for the county regarding Hurricane Michael recovery. With Board approval, I will submit the St. George Island Beach Burn Project application, which I'll talk about later in the meeting, with, with backup documentation, as the number one ranked project. The second ranked item will be the request to open and convert the old FSU Marina in Alligator Point to a state-managed boat ramp to allow aquaculture oyster state leaseholders access to their leases. The letter we sent to the Governor, his Cabinet, and our legislative delegation will be included with that request. And our final ranked submission will be a request for the state to take back ownership and maintenance responsibility of Alligator Drive. I will include a supporting white paper created by Mr. Frank McCombs Group as they are working on the acquisition of properties around Alligator Drive. If the Board has no other items they want me to include to Representative Shoaf, I'll do that today or tomorrow. I just need a motion agreeing to the list in the order that I presented to you here this morning.
Please get a vote.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Mastin. That, that rule, was they two up all the time?
Yes. Alligator Drive.
It should have been read down the list. I hope they heard them take it.
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I just want to emphasize, in the white paper you're submitting to the state to consider taking over Alligator Drive.
Yes.
I've said it before, this county has been a great steward of that very dysfunctional and impaired road over the years. And as we continue with the rebuilding project of Alligator Drive and that impaired area, I think it's a great testimony to the state, we're giving them something better back than what they gave us in years of care and outcome of construction.
If Shoaf get that, he'll be the governor.
I know, we need.
All right, all them, all them people?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Item seven, I was informed that HD Harder and Son, Harders and Son, has been awarded the contract with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to construct a living shoreline, breakwater, along the shoreline at the end of Melinda's Road. That should be Melinda's Road, Commissioners, sorry. Every time I say anything, it should be Melinda's Road. During the project, Harders and Son will need to act to use the southern end of Melinda Road as their work area, and will encompass a total beach area at the end of Melinda Road as well as the portion of the southern side of the park. I didn't say that correctly. The northern portion of Melinda Road, from Patton Road to the Aner entrance, would be open and unobstructed to the public. Attorney Schuler and Mr. Bill Crittinen have conferred to discuss a contract indemnifying the county and promising to return Melinda Road to its pre-closure condition. In addition, Attorney Schuler also. In addition, Attorney Schuler also recommends our certification of insurance, naming the county as an additional insured. A Harder and Son representative is here today, I hope, no, they said they were going to be, to answer any additional questions, and I will display the map that is attached to my report as this item is discussed, let me open it up a little bit for you, so Attorney Schuler could kind of pitch in here, because he's talked to them a little bit more than me, I think the barricades are right here, the entrance to Aner is right there, entrance to that one house is right here, and there's another house up here. Scare me if I'm wrong, Attorney Schuler, we're doing okay?
Well, excellent presentation as usual, Mike, two things that I would like to cover is there's a requirement for signage at the intersection of Milner Street and Patton Drive, notifying people that the road is closed at a certain point, so maybe it will cut down on some of the through traffic, and to also provide a turnaround, but otherwise, I think that Mr. Morone's explanation of the contract is sufficiently complete.
Mr. Chairman. So when they're asking for a closure, you're talking about a temporary closure, till they get the breakwater done, then they remove all barricades and the road go back to where it was?
Yes, sir. So I circles where the barricade could be, but there's actual staging area is further down, right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we running a little bit ahead, you think, and you said they pulled that head somebody?
Maybe, yeah, I think I told them about 10, but if they, if they come in, um...
You can have it late.
Yes.
You can talk to them.
Yes, well, Attorney Schuler will be talking to more than I have.
One of y'all.
Well, Mr. Chairman of the Board hasn't voted yet, but if things go the way this thing be going, I don't think they'll complain about a win when they were absent. But just for the public's information, follow up on, and flesh out what Commissioner Parrish mentioned, the closure will begin on October 21st, potentially a week later, towards the end of October 2019, and it will end on February the 28th, 2020, and they will also be providing some PSAs on the local radio station just to notify the public in addition to the road signage.
Okay.
But that, they were, this is obviously not their first rodeo, they were thoroughly prepared and engaged with the county and then coming to a contractual understanding and holding the county harmless and protecting the public's interest, so it was a pleasure actually working with them. I'm going to leave this contract with Mr. Morone for the chairman's signature and the signature of the company, assuming that the board's will is to approve this request.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
All right, item number eight, I attended a meeting about a week and a half ago where a local businessman stated that he would like to relocate and expand his business here in Franklin County, he's already in Franklin County, he wants to expand, he was inquiring about available grants and assistance from the U.S. Economic Development Administration. Mr. Greg Beday of EDA, along with Mr. Ben Chandler, who's here today, and Ms. Caroline Smith, they're both of ARPC, were also at the meeting, Commissioner Parrish came about halfway into the meeting, a lot of funding options and scenarios were discussed, but when consensus was reached that Franklin County is in need of an economic development plan, without a plan, and perhaps Economic Development Council, the county is unable to tap into any of the available economic development programs or funds to help current businesses expand or new businesses locate here in the county. With the assistance of Mr. Ben Chandler and Ms. Dana Crater of the International Economic Development Council, the county can receive a technical assistance EDA grant to help the county create an economic development plan and perhaps a council. This grant will cover the cost of travel, hotel, and meals for two volunteers. The first volunteer will meet with stakeholders, such as county commissioners, other elected officials, community leaders, et cetera, to recommend the makeup and size of the Economic Development Council. The second volunteer will create a plan for the EDC that will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Ben Chandler is here today, in case you have additional questions. If the board is inclined to proceed with this grant, there's an MOU that will require board action, I sent a copy to the MOU to Attorney Schuler for his review, so after we talk about it, if you're inclined to move forward, uh, yeah, we need authorization to sign, to approve the MOU and for the chairman to sign it. The only thing we are responsible for with this grant is providing, like, basically office space for them to meet with stakeholders from around the county, and this is people you guys will probably recommend, to help with this plan and help with this council. Keep in mind, Commissioners, I know we've had a very bad experience in the past with this, the difference this time, I think, is that this is all under your control, you, they bring it back to you, you're getting this TA grant, you know, to help and assist you to make a decision which way you want to go, you know, and unless you have questions that I can't ask, and Mr. Chandler can ask, answer.
Discussion? Any discussion on the board about this?
Mr. Chairman, I have something, if I may.
Go ahead.
Ben, first, thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Just to complement what Mr. Morone's saying, all this development or any discussion is going to be had, it's all going to come back to this board for final approval anyway, correct?
Absolutely, and Ms. Morone gave a great explanation.
Let me get your name and put it on the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Ben Chandler, I'm with the Appalachia Regional Planning Council.
Okay.
Uh, thank you. His explanation really covered the base on this particular idea of a project. To drop back a little bit more broadly on this, this is, this is a very easy thing to take advantage of, it's a, it's a great resource to our communities that are dealing with the hurricane recovery and resilience process, and this is a completely funded opportunity from the Economic Development Administration, and they have opportunities for folks to come in and out, we just need a little lead time to get them here to address any number of resiliency-type strategies that you might have. This idea of an economic development plan and developing the roadmap for an Economic Development Council was just one idea that came out of this, we could bring them in for a variety of things. To give an example, we're using them in other areas of the nine-county region that we serve, we're working with Chapola College, for example, they're working on trying to expand plans for their workforce training, so we had a volunteer come in, and that's really all that this is, this isn't even a grant application, we just, we'll, we'll get the memorandum of understanding and define a scope with Mr. Morone at your direction and, and for whatever you need, but going back to the example with Chapola College, we had someone come in for a week to help them develop a strategy to make their workforce training facility what they want it to be, as part of another grant application to expand their facility. We're bringing in a second volunteer in the coming weeks to help them get a better handle and understand what their pipeline of students are, where are they coming from, and where are they going to be able to place them, so they can really back up and bolster their application. We're using them in Liberty County to help as part of the long-term recovery plan there, and so there's plenty of opportunities to bring them in, we can target a specific economic development strategy that you may already have, that, I know staff wears many, many hats and needs assistance to, to, to address many of the initiatives that you have, so this is an opportunity to bring in for that particular technical need, whatever it may be, and, and really, I think, brought more broadly, what we're even asking here is allowing us as the council to have an opportunity to, to work with you to maybe even see how we might be able to use this resource even more in-depth and more targeted, and not just for the economic development plan or, or this process of potentially developing an Economic Development Council. So, it's something more broadly we can think about, we just had some initial conversations, and, and would love to explore that further, and also see what how else we might be able to assist through our organization.
Thank you, man. Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Mast.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Ben, thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Can you give us some examples of what gains other counties have benefited from such councils and exact dollars, amounts, and outcomes?
Wow, I, I, I'm not sure I could go into that detail, we, we do work, I do personally in my, in my role, I'm funded through the Economic Development Administration, my, my particular role with the council, and what I, I do specifically as part of this recovery effort is I've been working with the long-term recovery groups that are more citizen-driven, as well as working with the economic development organizations throughout the region, and I work pretty closely with Opportunity Florida, which you all are under their umbrella, so we've been trying to identify viable projects throughout our region that we can push more toward the, this limited time we have for funding through the disaster relief package passed at the federal level, so we work with the Economic Development Administration specifically with their particular line item as part of that bill, which is going to get spread pretty thin throughout our eight-state region, but we're trying to identify products within our region that can bolster economic recovery and resilience throughout, so, so we work with each and every one of our economic development councils and organizations, and, and we'd love to be able to help Franklin County bring that same thing here.
And we're offering these guys some housing, or facilitating some, some office location?
All they need is a place to set up shop for the time they're here, all their other expenses are paid for through the EDA.
And then, you know, we have a grants coordinator that could link with this opportunity as well, in some way, okay?
Let me ask a question, sir. Um, have y'all had any success, now like, we in Frank, we in Franklin, we don't have an EDC, but, um, have y'all been other places that didn't have a Economic Development Council, and, and was y'all successful in helping them do things?
Well, another example would be working with Calhoun County, where we work directly with their Chamber of Commerce, it can be an organization at that level as well to help advance strategies that they have as well, I know, right now, for example, in Calhoun County, the plate is very full with trying to administer not just the chamber, but the long-term recovery group there, so we're looking at strategies there to help them as well on that, using this resource. This is a new resource that really only came about as a result of the 2017 hurricanes, and at least in our area, it's been established since Katrina came through years back, and it's a targeted volunteer service to come in and give recommendations and assistance, it's nothing that you're bound to by any means, and it's something that you use as a platform for developing the next level of strategies, so we, we want to be able to use this resource to, you know, the best we can, we have it until about 2020 when their funding runs out, and we can bring them in as many times as we need to.
Well, information always good. Already voted? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, appreciate it.
If I may, item nine, Commissioners, in an effort to start the process of complying with ADA requirements for the county's website, I've researched software for both agenda automation and ADA compliance, based on that research, I'm recommending that the county purchase an annual subscription to Munich Code's meeting manager software. The software will reduce the need for costly conversion of documents, as more meeting information will be entered directly into their cloud-based agenda system, the more information that's entered into the system will then reduce the number of attachments that require the costly conversion process to comply with ADA requirements. The annual cost of the cloud-based software is $3,800, this agenda software will be used for these meetings, planning and zoning meetings, and adjustment agendas and minutes. We've been using Munich Code for codification of our ordinances for years, just need authorization or payment of the annual subscription for this software.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
And as a side note, it'll put Les Gray here, myself, and Ms. Lori Hahn, because some days, let me tell you. Item 10, DEO has forwarded the final draft of the agreement for the $750,000 Hurricane Michael recovery funds for, for signature, as Mr. Pierce and I have stated in previous meetings, the majority of these funds will be used as the county's match for the FEMA-funded Alligator Drive repair project. Once a firm match amount for this project is determined, the county will amend the scope of services with DEO and use the remaining funds for another project. I need approval and authorization for the chairman's signature on this agreement.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Item 11, at your September 3 regular meeting, the board authorized staff to negotiate with Genesis Half Incorporated for the design of improvements to County Road 38, from 13 Mile Road to Highway 98. This is the FDOT SCOP grant-funded project, an agreement has been reached with Genesis Half to complete the design of the improvements for $343,000. Mr. Kurington verified, that's the county planner, verified that this amount is within the grant amount, and we have met FDOT's consultants' Competitive Negotiations Act requirements. Staff recommends approving the contract and authorizing the chairman's signature.
That just for the design, right?
Yes, sir.
Pleasure to the board.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
This board, at your September 16 regular meeting, directed staff to contact Roberson and Associates to request an engagement letter to perform a forensic accounting services for the Lanark Village Volunteer Fire Department for their 2018 and 2019 financial records. This request was based on a recommendation letter from the sheriff investigators. Mr. Roberson has submitted an engagement letter with a scope of work and a not-to-exceed fee of $5,000. Approval and authorize the chairman's signature on this engagement letter.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mast, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question real quick.
Go ahead.
Mike, we just voted to do this audit of it, but I also see where we approved a check going out to Lanark St. Jane Volunteer Fire Department.
That's the MSBU disbursement that we...
MSBU distribution.
Is that the same funds that we are now going to perform an audit on?
Yes, sir, but I...
Who controls these funds?
I don't know legally, we can stop it, and that's...
I'm not saying stop it, I'm asking you who controls it.
Oh, it goes to...
The same, the same...
The tax collector actually gives us a check, and we, we deposit the funds into the MSBU trust fund, and then on a quarterly basis, we actually distribute the funds to the different fire departments, and this one would have been the settled out for.
So we're not sending them a check for $12,000?
We are.
We are?
Yeah, but that's part of their MSBU fund, yeah.
They do quarterly allowance.
Yeah, their special assessment collection.
So I'm saying if it's dysfunctional over there, who is overseeing this money?
I don't know that we have any authorization.
Curry? David Curry?
Yeah, they're supposed, each, if I was honest, like, correct me if I'm wrong, each fire district has a board of some sort, you know, they're supposed to at least, so we usually mail it to that board or the fire chief of that department, correct?
That's correct, yeah, yeah, I mean, as far as like our responsibility, we, we just have to distribute the funds.
So this is a quarterly payment we're making?
It is.
And we should have the results of this audit before the next payment?
Uh, we should.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I wouldn't give enough of them.
Okay.
That was just a question I had, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good one.
I'll move on, sir. Item 13, Community Action submitted two service call invoices for a total $450 for payment, both invoices are for East Point Fire survivors living in RV trailer, travel trailer, these invoices will be paid from the donated funds managed by Community Action Agency. Ms. Angela Webster from Community Action will be on your November agenda to, one of your November agendas, to present an update on, on the funds, the balance and what they use and how many people they've helped, but for today, I just need authorization to pay these two invoices.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question on that one, too, please, uh, when we're taking care of these East Point Fire survivor living in RV travel trailer?
Mm-hmm.
When are they supposed to get a new home?
This, the one, it's actually the same one, they're on the list with Ms. Belcher, that she leave already, they're on her list to get a new home coming up, yes.
Okay, so this is really a temporary fix until the new home comes in?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yes. And until we know how long, you know, exactly when the home comes in.
Right, okay.
They didn't ever give them a deadline on when they're supposed to be completed with all of them?
No, and I'm hoping, if you'd like me to, I can ask Ms. Belcher to come back when Angela comes, so it's kind of a joint presentation, so basically you have a completed list of both who CDBG has helped, has helped, or intends to help, and who Community Action...
How about just submitting information?
That works, too.
You're talking about an hour-long discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanna...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. But the last time I heard, she ain't helped the five people. I thought it was 30-something people that needed a home, but some of them don't qualify and all that.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's allowed to be a two-hour... So what I'm saying is we need to request information be sent to yourself, and you distribute it to the board so we don't have to go through...
That discussion.
That discussion.
Okay.
Because it takes so long and gets so complicated and...
I sure will.
And that's something we, they should have been doing anyway, letting the board know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Something like that. I mean, you know, keep us informed.
I will. I'll request this list.
That's when trouble started by not communicating. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, item number 14. I received an email from Ms. Sharon Ryder resigning as the county's designate on the Wilderness Coast Governing Board. As the board is aware, the county's library is part of the WIL system, which provides resources and benefits for the library system. Rather than appointing another designate to this seat, the board may want to consider appointing a commissioner to this seat. Commissioner Bolt has expressed an interest on serving on the WIL governing board.
I made a motion, Mr. Burke said on it.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Paris. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 15, and most of everything as we move forward here, commissioners, these are more informational items, not action items. So if anytime if we were running late, we could have deferred. On Friday, I met with Mr. Rick Harder and Mr. Joss Adams to discuss the Living Shoreline Project. Ms. Jenna Harper and Ms. Kim Ren, both of Aner staff, and Joe Taylor, Franklin Prime Minister, also to meet. Mr. Harder and Mr. Adams first appeared at your July 2 meeting to present and discuss the Living Shoreline Stability Project with the board. On Friday, we discussed stakeholder and agency meetings, background investigations, seagrass mappings, habitat suitability, and materials evaluation study and coastal conditions analysis. There will be four public meetings, which I suggested are held at different locations throughout the county, and three agency meetings. The agency meetings will be a perfect opportunity to discuss some of the concerns raised at the July 2 meeting, such as deterring the consumption of oysters that may grow at these locations and reserving appropriate access for fishermen casting nets or floundering. As these meeting dates are confirmed, I will inform the board, as there will have to be adequate notification that two or more commissioners will probably attend these meetings.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment, please?
Yeah.
Just so the board is aware, I don't know the full import of what I'm going to tell you, but as you represent on ARPC, they have informed us that the November meeting is going to be about possibly how this will be funded as well. So we think we've not only found the money for design, but the ARPC has found money for funding of this project as well. But I'll know more in November, and I'll be bringing it back to you guys.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, so at the agency meetings, what I refer to, all of the state agencies are going to be there, FWC, DAX, so especially that Commissioner Paris, you know, he was very concerned that we don't take a PR hit. And I've repeated this to them over and over again, we don't take a PR hit from someone eating an oyster from where the oyster catcher is located, get sick, you know, and then we get blasted, and we can't sell oysters, and the restrictions come down, and you know. So that's the perfect time for everybody to come together and figure out how can we protect ourselves from that, you know, in any one manner. And I know Commissioner Massey very talked about the access for the cast, people casting their nets, people floundering. So that's, again, you know, that's when we can discuss that. And that's why I say it's, this is one of those times where we're going to need, I'm going to have to declare that more than one commissioner will be there at these meetings publicly, because I think all you need to be there, to be very honest with you, you know, at this agency meeting.
I don't know whether they can make their, make their project work without oyster, without doing the oyster thing. They ever tried that?
Well, we bring it up at the agency meetings, because they...
You know, people gonna do what they want, or you can tell them not to eat that, that, you know, it's gonna hurt them. But somebody, sooner or later, they gonna try it. And whoever be responsible, I don't, it's not their fault, our fault, it's the one who done it.
Mm-hmm.
You can't tell people, you can tell them, but some people just hard-headed, they gonna do it. But it ought to be some kind of way they can use another form.
Like harvesting in a closed area, right?
Yeah.
Same, same thing. It's closed, but that's not gonna stop, you know?
Yeah, I'm gonna try one, and they gonna try it. But maybe it's some kind of other, I don't know whether that's cheaper or... Well, it's, ask them to look into it, do they have another source to do it without the oyster. They might have, might.
Well, these oysters, Mr. Chairman, if I might, these oysters just form there. They don't plant them or anything, they just form, they attach, attach to the substrate that might be used.
You should see this thing, this, this project, they're gonna use a stick in the water, you know, one looks like a lollipop, it's... So actually, I'm gonna go hit you guys with my little Caribbean accent here, born and raised. So the things are like a lot of braids, they look like dreadlocks. So one of them, they actually call rasta. So that's what they call it, like a rastafarian, you know, with the dreads. And that's what it is, and they have them formed loose, they have them formed like a lollipop, and basically, they're oyster catchers. So Chairman, that's what it's designed to do, to catch the oysters there. So that's, that's why it's very important for the entire board to be there at these agency meetings.
Well, it ought to be a job for somebody to keep the oysters off.
You're just gonna have to keep correct signage out there and tell people, you know, those oysters that they're trying to catch are gonna be used for water quality. As stuff runs off the highway and into these breakwaters and living shorelines, they call them, it's for water quality only, it's not for consumption. So it's just gonna be good signage.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but them, it'd be a good...
They can still do it, yeah.
It'd still be a good, you know, somebody to take them off.
Yeah, that's right.
Keep them, keep them working.
That's my one main concern about living shorelines is, is that fact right there.
All right.
Okay, so where are we? 16.
Living shoreline.
You inform the board that the county's consultant, Langton Consulting, has completed the application for the Florida Department of Emergency Management 2019 Hurricane Michael, Hurricane State Recovery Grant Program proposal for St. George Island Emergency Beach Burn Project. The overall cost of this project is approximately 1.2 million and includes 3,850 feet, linear feet of protective dune sand, native dune vegetation, sand fencing, engineering, design permitting, and management. The estimated timeline has the project closeout by June 1, 2020. That meets that deadline. Mr. Langton and his staff has been in constant communication with Mr. Pierce and I throughout the application process. So, and I, I meant to, I'll send it later, a copy of that application that was submitted already to the state, that's been signed and submitted, because we had to meet that deadline. 17, Running for the Bay Event. On the board, Running for the Bay Marathon event will be this Sunday, October 20. This event did not take place last year due to Hurricane Michael. I've received a certificate of insurance that I'll forward to the clerk and attorney Schuler. And Mr. Mark Henderson, the race director, will leave a cleanup refundable deposit with the county on the Friday, this Friday, that will be held until after the race route is inspected to make sure it's clean and clear. As with past events, this is a weekend-long event that benefits restaurants, hotels, and other local businesses. County deputies and police officers are also hired to provide security and traffic. Item 18, Aquaculture Lease Application. The Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, your Division of Aquaculture, has forwarded to the county a new aquaculture dock lease application, which was submitted to DAX. The department is processing the application and part of the process, accepting written comments until November 3. After reviewing the application, send me your questions and or comments, which I will forward to DAX. Due to the size of the file, I had to provide a link to download it, because it's a large file with a slow down, downloading your overall packet. Any comments you send to me, I will forward right away. Item 19. Yeah, I see that. Let me see if you can take, I'm sorry, pass these down for me, please, sir. Come back and get it. The county has received a notice from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection that GFP Timberlands LLLP has applied for a permit for the Lime Rock Mine north of Carabelle, known as Carabelle Rock LLC, Rock Landing Aggregate Mine. DSP is accepting comments on this permit until October 23. Mr. Currington, your county planner stated, if the county objects, it has to state how the proposal does not meet the county statutory requirements under the Florida Coastal Management Plan and offer suggestions, suggestions on how the project could come into compliance. Forward your comments and questions to me as soon as possible. This app, this file is also too large to attach to my report, as I provided a link for it. I've also sent you, when I took the file, I sent it to Clint Davis at Forestry for his opinion on this project, because I know it's been an ongoing thing here with mines, you know, and activating these mines. And I've just sent you Clint's response, that he responded to me this morning on that file. So let me know what you guys, what direction you want me to go in with this.
What is, I see where you sent this out, and then you asked a question, and he responded back. Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Go ahead.
This is the inholding of private land within the boundaries of the forest, the same area, approaching the board about our stance that we have talked previously still remains the same. I mean, the last sentence...
Yeah.
Don't make much sense to me.
Well, I think what he was trying to say is that their stance is still the same, you know, in reference to they, the forestry is not...
In favor.
In favor of mining, you know, even though it's private property, they still, their ingress, ingress and egress still has to come through the forest, because they have no roads. I don't think they have any access, as far as I know.
What about the citizens' complaints of groundwater contamination? So these, these comments made by the public in a, in a public meeting is the way I think the board ought to respond to them.
Okay.
So I...
So a letter stating all past comments based on some of the discussion this board has had, okay?
And a lot of them were negative as far as people's groundwater drinking, drinking water, because they don't have public water out there in these woods.
Okay.
So I'm sure William knows more of them than I do that live in that area. I think the comments should be what, what directions the board have already gotten from the public and their determination is made. And then the state does whatever they want to, of course, but I think we should submit those comments, because you have until, what, November 1st to make comment?
No, this one, no, unfortunately, this one is next week, October 23.
Well, I mean, we need to get that done now. I want to make a motion that county staff...
Send a letter.
...refer to the comments that were made in the public meetings from groundwater contamination, all the other concerns, and send that in.
Okay.
And Michael?
Sir? Don't we have some standards of suggestion from the state of Florida as how they see forestry managed and access and egress to this, all of this?
I could talk to Clint, sir, and find out, Mr. Davis, and see what he says to include that language in the letter, that's what you're...
Sure.
Kind of asking me to do.
Yeah.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Why them people mess with us, and they got to make the decision?
Yeah.
It don't make sense.
They gonna do what they want to do.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
All right, commissioners, if I may, item 20. Ms. Lori Switzer received notification from Florida Housing that the 2016-2017 annual report submitted last month has been approved. If you have any questions regarding the report, I encourage you to contact Ms. Switzer. It's only that, you submitted three, but there was only one closeout year, which was 2016-2017, so I was going to get in the record, it was approved. Item 21, inform you that FDOT has published their tentative 2021-2025 work plan for Franklin County. Mr. Currington, after reviewing the plan, stated that the only, he only observed one new county project, which is the widening and resurfacing of Highway 67 north of Crooked River from the bridge to Forest Road 166. It's approximately two miles in length. I should have included a copy of that plan in my report, and I will, I'll send it to you.
Mr. Chairman, Michael, what, what was the year in the plan that that was, do you know?
I'll have to look at it and see the plan marked. I got this tomorrow, but I'll get it to you right away today, sir.
Okay.
And finally, Mr. Schuler, 2020 census. I've been in discussion with Ms. Evelyn Ramirez of the U.S. Census Bureau of the need, on the need for Franklin County to move forward with the complete county committee formation and workshop training date. In order to create a successful CCC, members should be a reflection of those living in the county, so that the committee makeup should include leaders and members from faith-based, business, education, migrant, media, education, and healthcare sectors. Ms. Ramirez also suggests at least one elected official serve on this committee. She would like this committee formed and trained by the end of October. Good luck with that. I'm asking that you reach out to your constituents and ask those that are willing to serve to contact me as soon as possible. Quicker I get this committee together, the better we'll be at...
How many do you need?
I think both cities, both cities already have their committees set up and maybe have even been trained, so I need to get on the ball with this. Um, she's had five to seven members would be a good number. Um, I don't think there's any decision-making with this, it's just people that train, that take the lead. So if I get someone from each of your districts, I'll be really helpful. And commissioners, that's it for me this morning.
Who is this elected official you done that? Who is this elected official you done that?
Well, she, she recommends an elected official, but if I can get others in there, you know, I'm going to see, she didn't say we have to have one, she just recommended. Let's see if I can get at least one person from each of your districts to serve and see where we go from there. I'll probably create two at large members.
But we not gonna be meeting no more before then, October? How you gonna...
Okay, I'll try my best.
I'll do my best, too.
Yeah.
All right.
She didn't say you couldn't put county attorneys on it.
No, it says elected official.
I'll just tease him.
Yeah.
You'll call me Mr. Bill Maloney.
He retired.
You went there, not me.
I know. And that's it for me, commissioners, you have anything else?
And anybody got anything else for Mr. Maroon?
Just, I remember this new software that you're talking about getting for the, developing the agenda?
Yes, sir.
You had told me that that software then allows you to put the documents that support an agenda item right under the agenda item, so we're not scanning.
Yes.
That's, that to me is a neat thing.
I didn't expand on that discussion, because I kind of wanted to approve it first, and then I hit you the stickers, the shock after. But basically, there'll be a change in the format of the agenda, so basically, where you see my name on this paper, all my report items will be under that.
That's great.
But...
We don't have to chase those things anymore.
Yeah, so there won't be the agenda and my report, it'll be one document, basically. So it'll help you with the flow, if that, if that can get away with saying that, yeah. But there'll be a slight change, so we'll work together, myself, Ms. Hines, and whoever else.
Anything else for Mr. Maroon? Okay, keep up the good work. Next on the agenda will be Mr. T. Thomas Michael Schuh, County Attorney.
Mr. Paul, do you have a display for this next presentation?
Which is?
The whole house, the easement request?
Let me check my email, I'm sorry. Let me check my email, I'm sorry.
No, if you don't, listen, don't...
Yeah.
The commissioners attached to my report is a black and white drawing showing a request for an easement on St. George Island that was forwarded to me by Mr. Marone. Uh, the necessity for this is that the board had previously approved a commercial site plan on St. George Island, but they don't have enough room on their site for their aerobic system, so they bought property across the alley from their property. They are requesting, as others have in the past, the permission of the county to get a 10-foot wide, about 30-foot long utility easement going across one of your alleys on St. George Island, so they can connect this commercial site plan to an aerobic system that's across the alley from their, uh, commercial site plan. And generally speaking, this is located at Third Street East and East Gulf Beach Drive on St. George Island. On the north side of this is East Pine Avenue. The alley, of course, would be in between East Pine and, uh, East Gulf Beach Drive. Uh, I've looked at this, typically the requirements that we would have is that they indemnify the county and hold us harmless if there are any damages or environmental contamination, that if the county has a, a public works project which requires them for some reason to relocate or temporarily remove and then reinstall their utilities, they would do so at the county's request and at their expense, uh, but otherwise, the utility easement would essentially be there, uh, in perpetuity. So my recommendation is, as we have in the past, to allow this commercial site plan to move forward, as I've described it to you here this morning.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Massey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous.
Misses, do, do any of you have any questions for me concerning the non-action items on my report?
Anybody got any question for Mr. Schuler?
I would give you this update on the item concerning, um, Alligator Drive and the potential of purchasing some property from a private citizen down there. I sent the letter, I gave them a deadline of yesterday to let me know if they were interested in moving forward with an appraisal process, and if I did not receive a notification from them by yesterday, I would presume, this is all stated in my letter, I would presume that they were not interested in moving forward and negotiating with the county for the purchase of that property, and I've not received either an email or a phone call or a letter, so I'm going to presume that is a dead issue, unfortunately, but I thought I would get that in the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on to the commissioner's comments, sir, I'll clarify, well, my, my clarify, let, let me say this one thing, uh, the superintendent, Ms. Moses, the reason she didn't attend, apparently she left, her staff left a voicemail on my phone yesterday saying that, uh, she'd received, uh, the letter from Attorney Schuler with that list of items, so she wasn't prepared to come today, so I just want to clarify that it wasn't her, it was me, I didn't check my voicemail yesterday afternoon, so that's where that confusion came up. And my next item is, don't forget, 1:30 is a presentation from, uh, Mr. Alliance, TMH, Mr. Jim Coleman, so we'll start. I will convert the room so that, uh, the two tables will be together, because your winged board of directors will sit below you here, facing the audience also, as he makes his presentation. That starts at 1:30 sharp. I'll make more coffee.
Commissioner, comment?